Good evening and welcome to tonight's Bible study class. It is a pleasure and an honour once again to sit before you this evening. And I want to convey to you how happy I would be to receive your feedback and comments after this broadcast, as to what you found out whilst observing this passage for yourself. Also, any questions that you may have concerning what I say this evening? And this will be much appreciated if you would contact the ministry by using the contact button at the bottom of this page. In a moment, we will commence tonight with our prayer focus, which is going to be centred around the following Psalm, 105, verses 1 to 15. So if you'd like to turn to your Bibles now, to Psalm 105, we shall be commencing in prayer. O give thanks to the Lord, call upon his name, make known his deeds among the people. Lord, we thank you for once again allowing us to come before you to suffer from you tonight. Your deeds are many, and tonight we shall be once again meditating upon your wondrous deeds and your goodness, which you revealed to us throughout this time we spend with you. Sing praises to him, tell of all his wondrous works. We sing praises to your name, O God, praises to your name. Your works are amazing and brilliant. They bring life, light and much joy to our hearts and minds. Reassure us that you are firm in control and sovereign. Glory in his holy name, let the hearts of those who seek the Lord rejoice. Yes, Lord, we rejoice tonight in our hearts, because we hope to find you in your word this evening, so that we may know you more intimately. We love your name, which is a beautiful name. There is glory in that name. Seek the Lord and his strength, seek his presence continually. Lord, we can do nothing without you, and as such, we seek you continually. We desire your presence perpetually. We need your strength to carry us through our trials and our periods of confusion and attack. So Father, we seek your covering this evening as we spend time in your presence. That the enemy will not snatch the word from our minds or attack our minds and hearts whilst it is open to you. That you will guide our thoughts to the truth written in your word. Keep us focused on that truth. Remember the wondrous works that he has done, his miracles and the judgments he uttered. Lord, we recall all the miracles that you performed whilst on earth and from heaven, and the constant miracles that you perform in our lives daily. From allowing us to wake up in our right minds, to strengthening us to face trials, to be a light to our pathway and a lamp to our feet as we move through various situations that you have predestined for our lives. We pray you bring to our remembrance the judgments you mentioned in the past when questionable situations arose, so that we may remain in right standing with your holiness. O offspring of Abraham, his servant, children of Jacob, his chosen ones. As descendants and co-hears with Abraham and your chosen people, we come to you this evening for a renewing of our minds and hearts, for an expansion of knowledge and wisdom and understanding, which we know you give liberally. He is the Lord, our God. His judgments are in all the earth. We acknowledge you as our Lord and God. Things you have said and decisions you have made remain on earth, and we see manifestations of this continually every day. It is our standard, it is our guidance. He remembers his covenant forever, the word that he had commanded for a thousand generations. In remembering your covenant, you have proved time and time again that you are faithful, trustworthy and worthy of all praise, all honour and all glory. The covenant that he made with Abraham, his sworn promise to Isaac. This covenant you originally made with Abraham, your servant, and then continued it through Isaac, another one of your servants. The promise of blessings in land, many nations, including monarchy, being born through their offspring. You have kept even until this day. Even though many afflictions, sorry, even through many afflictions, they never cease to multiply. Where she formed to Jacob as a statute, to Israel as an everlasting covenant. We observe that you found it necessary to reiterate the covenant to Jacob, your servant whom you later named Israel, when you upgraded him in stature and confidence. It was to this newly-named Israel that you confirmed your everlasting covenant. The Israel who had overcame his fear of his brother after robbing him of his birthright and father's blessing. Not the old Jacob that had carried out these deeds, but the repentant newly-transformed Israel through his trials and afflictions at the hands of his uncle Laban, saying, "To you I will give the land of Canaan as your portion for an inheritance", promising him Canaan as his part of the inheritance in which he dwelt. When there were few in number of little account and sojourners in it. Your people were originally only a small nation and were foreigners in that land, wandering from nation to nation, from one kingdom to another people. They had no stability, no place to call home. So they moved around like gypsies with no fixed abode. They were vulnerable. They would have been considered of no importance because of their initial financial stature. That is how we first start off life with you as new Christians. But then we are transformed more into your likeness. In so doing, there is no way we could then be recognised for long as people who are insignificant. As you abide in us and you are glorified. It is through you we obtain our identity, our true wealth, our true inheritance. He allowed no one to oppress them, he rebuked kings on their account. Lord, through your infinite wisdom, you perceived the persecution that your people could have faced, and you stood up as a banner and protector, preventing them from being abused. Not one would dare to harm your people. Saying, "Touch not my anointed ones, do my prophets no harm." You made a declaration for your holy prophets, putting a shield around them, your most prized possessions, your mouthpiece in the earth. What foresight, what care and loving detail you made for them. We thank you for your continuing watch over us, your people and your word. Amen. I thought tonight I would venture back a bit. I'd like to venture back to chapter 34, when Jacob wrestled with God. His issue was believing that there was a physical God, that God was real. He saw the idols and he could touch them, but he had only experienced God up until that point as a vision or a dream. So his circumstances made him discontented and his prayers were fervent and strong. So God gave him the reassurance he was looking for, the confidence required to face the next trial, which was the confrontation with his brother Esau. Remember, God's relationship with Adam was the most intimate of all the patriarchs up until this point, and that communication had been lost as a result of the sin committed by Adam and Eve. So try to imagine what it must have been like for Jacob, a bit like it is for a lot of people today. To worship, have faith, believe in an invisible God. All we have are the stories of the Bible and the fellowship of the believers. If you follow the ministry on the website, I take you through things I have experienced and found out that will help you on your journey to realising that God is real. It is my intention to prepare your heart, mind, spirit for worship, for prayer and most importantly, for communion with God. I'm only able to do this through his guidance and help. So to recap, last time, in chapter 35, Jacob, although he had wrestled with God, still had an issue with idols. God readdresses this point yet again. He tells Jacob and he starts to flee and go to Bethel. Here, he renamed Jacob Israel once again. Why? How is it that applicable to us? Many times, God changes our garments and upgrades us. He gives us a new name as a sign of this. Like when we become new Christians after baptism. But we keep reverting to old habits because we have a problem adjusting to the new. Jacob should have engaged and inquired of God to assist him in adjusting to the new. Nonetheless, God, in his mercy and much grace, blesses Jacob, once again reaffirms the covenant he had with his father and grandfather, promising his descendants land in the larger nation. We heard of the birth of Jacob's twelfth son Benjamin and the death of Rachel. We then were given a summary of the genealogy of Jacob and his sons, born to his various wives and concubines. After the blessing, Jacob returns to Mamme where Isaac his father, at the age of 180 dies, and both himself and Esau, his brother, buries their father. And then we went to chapter 36. We then learned the genealogy of Esau's descendants. We witnessed that the wealth of both Jacob and Esau was so great that they could not live in the same vicinity, live or had to separate. Esau lived in Edom and was known as a father of Edomites, and Jacob lived in Canaan, the place where both his father and grandfather sojourned. Now remember, Esau married the daughter of Ishmael, Abraham's other son, born to him by Agasira's handmaid. This was done to compensate the fact that he had married out of the family lineage, which his parents disapproved of, that he lost favour. So to rectify this, he went to the other extremity over marrying his grandfather's outcast son, descendant. We observed from the list of descendants that there were many, including grandsons, daughters, etc., etc., which was a fulfillment of God's promise to Abraham. We then look at the kings that reigned in the land of Eden before any king reigned over Israel. There were seven generations in total that were mentioned. We then were given a summary of the descendants of Esau and saw the emergence of dukes, which reiterates God's promise that the descendants of Abraham would include royalty, nobility. Then we moved on to chapter 37. Jacob, who now resides in Canaan, gives a coat of many colours to Joseph, who he has established as his favourite son. Not because it was the son of Rachel whom he loved, but because he was the child of his old age. We raised the question, why did he not see Benjamin the same likeness? They were both born of the same mother and were both children of his old age. We learned that resentment built up between Joseph's other brothers and himself as a result, and they were harsh with him whenever they spoke to him. Joseph had two dreams, the first directly related to how his brothers would bow down to his authority. The second illustrated that both his parents and his brothers would be subject to his authority. The reaction of his brothers was negative, they hated him even more. His father also was alarmed at what he had said. A key question that we perhaps found in chapter 37, verse 8. Shall thou indeed reign over us, or shalt thou indeed have dominion over us? And verse 10. What is this dream that thou hast dreamed? Shall I and thy mother and thy brethren indeed come to bow down ourselves to thee, to the earth? Joseph was unwise when he spoke of his dream publicly. We discover that it was necessary so that God wanted him, so that what God wanted him to become was fulfilled. We shall now continue with the story tonight. So if you'd like to refer to chapter 37 in the book of Genesis, we shall pick up the story again from verse 11. And his brethren envied him, but his father observed the same. An important connective in verse 11, "but his father observed", experiential, pragmatic, practical, rational, the same. So his father never envied him, but was logically trying to comprehend what Joseph was saying. He wanted to investigate how this was going to be, why it was going to be necessary. He was the leader God had given him wisdom to discern. Initially, Israel thought his son was being arrogant because he had given him the code, hence why his line of questioning in verse 10. However, we see in verse 11 that Jacob now acknowledges that as Joseph's dreams were from God, it should not be treated with ignorance or contempt, but investigated as to the reason why. Moving on, verse 12. And his brethren went to feed their father's flock in Shechem. And Israel said unto Joseph, Do not thy brethren feed the flock in Shechem? Come, and I will send thee unto them. And he said to him, Here am I. Jacob was concerned about what the brothers will do to the flock and their attitude, because he knows the way in which they went off to do the chore. They obviously were very upset with what Joseph had just told them about in the dreams. And so he was genuinely and justified concerned what were they going to do with the flock, because they were in a bad mood. So he urges Joseph now in verse 14, to go and check on them. So and he said to him, Go, I pray thee, see whether it be well with thy brethren and well with the flocks, and bring the word again. So he sent him out of the veil of Hebron, and he came to Shechem. And a certain man found him, and behold, he was wandering in the field. And the man asked him, saying, What seeks thou? And he said, I seek my brethren; tell me, I pray thee, where they feed their flocks. And the man said, They are departed hence; but I heard them say, Let us go to Dothan. And Joseph went after the brethren and found them in Dothan. And when they saw him afar, off, even before he came near unto them, they conspired against him to slay him. And they said one to another, Behold, this dreamer cometh. Come now therefore, and let us slay him, and cast him into some pit, and we will say, Some evil beast hath devoured him, and we shall see what will become of his dreams. And Reuben heard it, and he delivered him out of their hands, and said, Let us not kill him. And Reuben said unto them, Shed no blood, but cast him into this pit, that is in the wilderness, and lay no hand upon him, that he might rid him of their hands, so to deliver him to his father again. And it came to pass, when Joseph was come unto his brethren, that they stripped Joseph out of his coat, his coat of many colours that was on him. And they took him and cast him into the pit, and the pit was empty; there was no water in it. And they sat down to eat bread, and they lifted up their eyes and looked, and behold, a company of Ishmaelites came from Gilead with their camels, bearing spicery and balm and myrrh, going to carry it down to Egypt. And Judah said unto his brethren, What profit is it, if we slay our brother and conceal his blood? Come, let us sell him to the Ishmaelites, and let not our hand be upon him; for he is our brother and our flesh, and his brethren were content. Then they passed by media nights, merchantmen, and they drew and lifted up Joseph out of the pit, and said, Joseph, to the Ishmaelites, for twenty pieces of silver. And they brought Joseph into Egypt. This verse reminds me of when Jesus was betrayed and was sold out by Judas for thirty pieces of silver. Favour, the promised prophecy of position, resentment, jealousy and bitterness, betrayal, trial, imprisonment. How many of us are suffering persecution because of someone else's jealousy? How many of us are living a substandard life because of someone else's jealousy? How many of us are denying our rights and suppressing what we are entitled to believe and have because of someone else's bullying and influence? How many of us are subject to others because of not using discernment and discretion? How many of us, due to ignorance, are living below what God designed and is destined us to live? In this story, I see Jacob as playing the role of God the Father. The eleven brothers are the patriarchs, and men God placed on the earth prior to Jesus. Then came his one and true son, Jesus, who is depicted by Joseph. The flock are the people on earth, God's prized stock. This sparked jealousy and rage, because the favour and clear excellence of Jesus and how he spoke as one with authority and had power and dominion over everyone he met on earth, even the Pharisees and Saddites. It resulted in them trying to kill him and turn him over to the authorities. The authorities of this time were the Egyptians because of their wealth and kings. This account of Joseph was a rehearsal before the real event. The profound verse "I believe" of this chapter is spoken by the man in the field, verse 15. What seeks thou? Jacob wanted Joseph to reconcile with his brothers because he had caused, he felt, a rift because of not being diplomatic in his receipt of the coat and his dreams. Likewise, Jesus came to reconcile and find that what was lost, a relationship between God and his people who had gone astray. We see the ultimate fulfilment of Jesus's mission in the story of Zechias, the little man who climbed a tree to see Jesus and hear him speak. Verse 29. And Reuben returned unto the pit, and behold, Joseph was not in the pit, and he sent, or sorry, he rent his clothes. And he returned unto his brethren, and said, The child is not, and I, whither shall I go? And they took Joseph's coat and killed a kid of the goats, and dipped the coat in the blood. And they sent the coat of many colours, and they brought it to their father, and said, This have we found; know now whether it be thy son's coat or not. And he knew it, and said, It is my son's coat, and evil beast hath devoured him. Joseph is without doubt rent in pieces. And Jacob rent his clothes, and put sackcloth upon his lines, and mourned for his son many days. And all his sons and all his daughters rose up to comfort him, but he refused to be comforted. And he said, For I will go down into the grave unto my son, mourning; thus his father went for him, and the media nights sold him into Egypt unto Potiphar, an officer of Pharaoh's, and captain of the guard. So like Joseph was sold into slavery, Jesus was also sold into the hands of officials to be tried and persecuted before dying. This was necessary because of the condition of sin in the world. Sin was rampant and people's hearts and minds were becoming insensitive to it, especially God's people, his chosen ages on the earth. This is because they had been slowly removed from connecting to their source of righteousness, God. They had communion with him in the beginning. Now they had little and no connection, often reverting to idols because they doubted his existence even though there were indications through visions and dreams. Their hunger for God are diminished as their only source, often turning to idols, just as we often turn to worldly things like food, sex, drugs or entertainment, for refuelling our spirit, which can only be refuelled by connecting and fellowshiping with God. We connect more with instant fleshly gratifications, so the spiritual delay disciplined gratifications, which ultimately profits us much more. Moving on to chapter 38. And it came to pass at that time that Judah went down from his brethren and turned into a certain Adulamite, whose name was Harar. And Judah saw there a daughter of a certain Cananite, whose name was Shua. And he took her and went in unto her. And she conceived and bear a son, and he called his name Er. And she conceived again and bear a son, and she called his name Amman. Anan. And she yet again conceived an other son, and called his name Shalat. And he was at Chesid when she came, sorry, when she bear him. And Judah took a wife, Er, his firstborn, whose name was Tamar. And heard Judah's firstborn was wicked in the sight of the Lord, and the Lord slew him. And Judah said unto Amman, Anan, Go in into thy brother's wife and marry her, and raise up seed to thy brother. And Anan knew that the seed should not be his. And it came to pass, when he went in unto his brother's wife, that he spilled it on the ground, lest that he should give seed to his brother. And the thing which he did displeased the Lord; wherefore he slew him also. Then said Judah to Tamar, his daughter-in-law, Remain a widow at thy father's house, till Shalat, my son, be grown; for he said, Less per adventure, he die also, as his brethren did. And Tamar went and dwelt in her father's house. And in process of time, the daughter of Shua, Judah's wife, died, and Judah was comforted, and went up into his sheep shearers, to Timna. He and his friend Harar, the Adulamite, and it was told to Tamar, saying, Behold, thy father-in-law go up to Timna to shear his sheep. And she put her widow's garments off from her, and covered her with a veil, and wrapped herself, and sat in an open place, which is by the way of Timna; for she saw that Shalat was grown, and she was not given unto him to wife. When Judah saw her, he thought her to be a harlot, because she had covered her face. And he turned unto her by the way, and said, Go to, I pray thee, let me come in unto thee; for you knew not that she was his daughter-in-law. And she said, What wilt thou give me, that thou mayest come in unto me? And he said, I will send thee a kid from the flock. And she said, Wilt thou give me a pledge, till thou send it? And he said, What pledge shall I give thee? And she said, Thy signet, and thy bracelets, and thy star, that is in thine hand. And he gave it her, and came in unto her, and she conceived by him. And she arose and went away, and laid by her veil from her, and put on the garments of her widowhood. And Judah sent the kid by the hand of his friend, the Adulamite, to receive his pledge from the woman's hand; but he found her not. Then he asked the men of that place, saying, Where is the harlot that was openly by the wayside? And they said, There was no harlot in this place. And he returned to Judah, and said, I cannot find her. And also the men of the place said, That there was no harlot in this place. And Judah said, Let her take it to her, lest we be ashamed. Behold, I sent this kid, and thou hast not found her. And it came to pass, about three months after that, it was told Judah, saying, Tamar, thy daughter-in-law, have played the harlot, and also, behold, she is with the child of Hordom. And Judah said, bring her forth, and let her be burnt. When she was brought forth, she sent to her father-in-law, saying, by the man whose these are am I with child? And she said, discern, I pray thee, whose are these, the signet and bracelets and star? And Judah acknowledged them and said, she hath been more righteous than I, because that I gave her not to Shala, my son, and he knew her again no more. And it came to pass, in the time of her travail, that, behold, twins were in her womb; and it came to pass, when she travailed, that the one put out his hand, and the midwife took and bound upon his hand a scarlet thread, saying, this came out first. And it came to pass, as he drew back his hand, that, behold, his brother came out; and she said, how hast thou broken for? This breach be upon thee; therefore his name was called Fares. And afterward came out his brother, that had the scarlet thread upon his hand, and his name was called Zarah. So we see that Judah, after he's left his brothers, and the key question is in verse twenty-six, which was what caused the change of events from Reuben selling Joseph into slavery to Judah selling Joseph into slavery? Judah, we see, goes to the Adullamite, called Hurrah, and makes friends with him. He finds this woman, she gets involved with her, he has three sons, Byah, Ur, Onan, and Shala. And um he finds a wife for his eldest son, her name's Tamar. But yet God finds wickedness with Ur. So God slays him, and he dies. We then see, as a result, obviously, Tamar is now left as a widow, and um she's without a husband, obviously without children, and so Judah instructs his next son, Onan, to go in, marry her, and conceive a child with her. However, Onan isn't pleased about the idea of getting this woman pregnant because he feels it's not really his place to put the seed into this woman. And what he does displeases the Lord, and so he also is killed as a result. Two questions I felt was required for clarification at this point. What was the sin that Ur committed that displeased the Lord? And why was it that Onan's decision not to impregnate Tamar displeased the Lord? Both answers lie around the fact that the covenant between himself and Abraham would not have been fulfilled, it would have been violated. As the objective is that they would be blessed and multiplied, in the case of Ur, his wickedness was not apparently related apparently related to conceiving a child with his wife because God had removed him from the marriage by death. He was not able to fulfill his husbandly duty. However, the case was different for his brother, who deliberately opposed the decision that he should father the child of his deceased brother's wife, thus fulfilling the promise of God for their seed to multiply. Hence why the Lord slew him. So then Judah promises, makes a promise to Tamar that when Shala, his youngest son, comes of age, that he will um give him to her, so that um they can be married and have children. And the condition, he said, that she had to do in order to um have that promise was that she had to remain at her father's house, remain a widow, and just live that life of celibacy, you know, not get involved with anybody. But in the meantime, whilst Tamar's actually waiting for Shala, we see that Judah's wife um dies. He then goes off to um Timnath with his friend Hurrah, the Adullamite, to shear his sheep. If it's sheep sharing time, then obviously that's all, isn't it? That's um funds that he can go raise and things um to bring in funds for his wealth and roofing, um what he's, what he's um been um working on for a while. So Tamar gets wind of this, that she finds out that he's actually gone to Timnath. And obviously um now she's, she's thinking about obviously the promise that he made her. And it looks like he's reneged, so as a result, Tamar took off her widow's garments, she covered herself with a veil, so she disguised herself. Um she wrapped herself up, and she sat on an open place, by the way, in Timnath. Because she realized that obviously Shala has now grown up, and she was not given him as a husband. So basically she made herself available. Um now we see that Judah meets her, and because of the way she looks, and she's just in a disguise, he thought she was a harlot because she's in an open field and she's just making herself look available. And so he asks her for sex, as we see. But he doesn't realize her identity, that that is his daughter-in-law. Her response is, what is he gonna pay her for giving her, for giving him sex? His response is a young goat um from his flock. So if you think about in those days, um goats and things were commodities, and they were obviously valuable. So promising something like that um in his mindset um would have been um something valuable. However, the story unfolds a bit more. And um she says um wilt thou give me a pledge, till you send it? So in other words, she wants him to leave something with her of his possession to confirm this transaction had actually taken place. And so he asks her, what does she require? So her response is his signet ring, his bracelets, and the staff that he has in his hand. So he gives her these items, okay, and then he has sex with her, and she becomes pregnant. So she removes her disguise, and she goes back to how she used to look as a widow, and um she sort of goes away. Now, the question is, why does she do this? Because if we see, Judah sends the goat now to the woman that he believes to be an harlot. However, his friend and the Adullamite cannot find her. So the Adullamite makes an inquiry as to, you know, where's the harlot that was sitting in the open um area? And um the men in the town are saying that no, there wasn't any harlot there at all. And so he goes back and reports to Judah what's happened. So Judah said, um, we really, we'd better let her just have the things, otherwise it's gonna look really stupid. Um because you've just gone there, tried to find her and to give her this goat, and she's not actually, she's not actually got, she's not there, she's not receiving it. So we see that three months after this has occurred, Judah is informed that his daughter-in-law, Tamar, is pregnant, and that she's been uh playing a prostitute, so he orders that she be summoned and that she be burnt. But Tamar, when she's summoned, um sends a message basically to um Judah, asking him, obviously, who do these things belong to? Because the person who's um these things, which is a pledge he gave her, um is the barber of her child. And so Judah then realizes the error was on his part, and therefore it forfeited anything, any argument that he actually had with her, and therefore he had to leave her alone. And we see finally that when it was time for her to give birth um to the twins, that she, obviously she had twins, she's having twins, that one of them had the hand that came out, and um but it wasn't actually the one that came out first, although the midwife thought that that was going to be the one that came out first, it was the actual second uh the other child that came out first, and thus became the firstborn. And subsequently, they were named Fares and Zarah respectively. So we see that Judah had a further two sons by his daughter-in-law. Jacob was a twin, him and his brother Esau. Now Jacob had stolen his brother's birthright and blessing. We see now a physical manifestation in his grandchildren whereby, due to trickery by his own son, his grandchildren were killed due to sin. And an odd birth has now arisen, where the firstborn seems to have been switched by the time it was ready to appear in the world. And I think this story of Judah and his promises to Timnath, sorry, Tamar, um certainly rings bells of um a situation with Ruth um and Naomi, when she was left as a widow and had to find a kingdom redeemer, because that's obviously the custom, which clearly wasn't um fulfilled in this scenario. Also, if we compare the situation, very similar to when Laban promised Leah to Jacob, sorry, Rachel to Jacob, and he had to work a further seven years for Rachel, and he gave Leah instead, gave him Leah instead. Um but Tamar never actually had the promise delivered to her, even after so many years. So she had to take action. So they were a family of lies and disrespect, their word was not to be trusted. Unlike our ultimate redeemer, who kept his promise until death and resurrection. Isn't it amazing that God keeps his promises? How fortunate we are that he does. Could you imagine if Jesus never went to the cross, what the repercussions would have been? He would have lost our hope of salvation, we would, we would have lost our hope of salvation. Satan would have never been subjugated. We would have been faced with living in eternal death, we would never have received the gift of eternal life, and our destiny would have been hell. We would never have had communion ever again with God. So that concludes tonight's Bible study session. I hope that you enjoyed it and found it informative. Please remember that I welcome your comments. Until we meet again, I shall see you next month, same time, same place, via Ministry UK. I love you all in Christ our Lord. Until next time, bye-bye.